All right, we're going to call this meeting to order. If we could all stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which is standing one nation under God, in the name of the Lord.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Scott, if you could call the roll.
Mrs. Albright.
Here.
Mrs. Bell.
Here.
Mrs. Godfrey.
Here.
Mr. Jerick.
Here.
Mrs. Leoni.
Here.
Mrs. Olson.
Yes, here, here.
Okay.
I know my line.
Miss, Mr. Scott, here? Mr. Strobel?
Here.
Wow, all right.
Let's start it.
And Mrs. Thompson.
Here.
All present.
Okay, thank you. And moving on to the superintendent's report, Dr. Cooper.
Thank you, Madam President. Just start with a brief COVID update on where we are with our positive cases and related close contact identifications. They remain consistent since my last report a couple of weeks ago. They can, those, that information can continue to be accessed on the district's COVID-19 page via our dashboard. Also would like to share with the board that, as a review for my update, that we will be asking, administration will be asking and requesting for board action when adjusting the calendar at the end of the board, the board meeting calendar for June that currently indicates the two dates of the meeting in June would be the second and the fourth Monday. We're requesting a change for the first and the second Monday, and that's due to having to have final board action on the budget on that second, that second Monday. It's the first and second Monday, and we're asking for board action on that second Monday is typically the case with the budget every year because we have to get that off to the state by the end of June. The, also, at the committee of the whole, next month, we'll be sharing the draft 20, or the final 22, 23 school year, school calendar for a board review with the intent of the board taking a look at it and moving it to the voting meeting for final approval at the June voting meeting. Continue our planning for our district buildings rightsizing at our affected buildings, which is the primary, center, intermediate center, and the middle school, and that work will continue and intensify as we return from the winter break. Publicly, I'd like to thank the, our Blavia Learning Community Board of School Directors, administrators, professional staff, support staff, and contracted service providers, as well students and families for continued work together throughout this school year as we continue to navigate the growth opportunities that are associated with the pandemic, and wish everybody a safe and healthy winter break and happy holidays. And also, my final item is I would like to welcome publicly Kathleen Spotts, who's in the back of the room there. She will be replacing Mr. Miller, who's to her right, our left, district security officer. Mr. Miller is retiring effective the end of the month of December here, so we wish him well, and we welcome Ms. Spotts to her new role here in the district. And that concludes my report.
All right, thank you, Dr. Cooper. Let me just ask for clarification. Are we going to be adding the change to the calendar in June to the committee of the whole next month?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to procedures for public participation. If you have a prepared statement to be read to the board, you should have a copy to be presented to the board president prior to being addressed. Comments on agenda items will be made by rising and approaching the microphone, stating your name and address, and signing in on the sheet provided. You'll be granted up to three minutes to address the board. The three-minute time limit will start when you begin to speak. When three minutes are over, you'll be asked to be seated. Any item that is not on the agenda, as well as items acted upon, comments can be made at the designated section at the end of the agenda. Okay, and having said that, do we have any presentations by the public on agenda items?
Hi, how you all doing?
Good.
Good. My name is Richard Miller. I've been here before, and I just wondered how you made out with suggestions addressing the virus last time.
One more time?
I wondered, I wondered how you made out addressing the virus. I'm sorry. How you made out addressing the things that we talked about last time? Immunities for the children, including the other buses, friends.
The answers from your, for your, for your questions were posted on the website.
See, that's the problem. I don't, I don't look.
And that's, that's okay when you, by the time, because I told you I would try to catch up with you at the end of the meeting, and you were gone, so are you okay with staying until the end of the meeting? Because I can, I can, I can, I can talk to you about that.
Sure.
Like, yeah, okay.
And the other thing was about this is Jesus' birthday, so I think we need to take a little bit of time to check and see what his word says, and that way we can all work better hand in hand and solve the problems with the virus.
Amen.
All right, thank you.
That's it. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move into the, the body of the meeting. Announcements, we do, I don't think we have any agenda edits? Correct? Yes. And there will be no meeting after this meeting, which doesn't make me the least bit happy at all. And so consent items, moving on to 3A, 1 through, 1 through 8. Do I have a motion for those?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Strobel, do I have a second?
A second.
Mr. Jerick?
Yes.
Mrs. Leoni?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Yes?
Mr. Strobel?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Olson?
Yes.
All yeses, nine yeses. Okay, moving on to personnel consent items. We have 4A, 1 through, 1 through 6? Yes, 6. And do I have a motion for those?
Motion.
Ms. Bell, do I have a second? Ms. Leoni? Any comments, questions, concerns from the board?
I do have a question.
Yep.
I see often, and again, maybe this was explained to you before, so I apologize.
Uh huh.
But I see a lot of mid-year retirements. Sort of anything that, you know, doesn't that create an additional hardship on the school, things of that nature, and just something you might want to consider the next negotiations that we talk about? Finish the year out, it gives us, you know, it gives us time to react to retirement at that point. Is that something that can?
I mean, here's, there's currently language in the contract that is there to try to assist us with that type of a planning. However, you know, folks reach certain milestones in their career that allow for them to retire at certain points, so it's kind of hard to control that.
Okay. Does it create additional hardship for us?
Well, I mean, there's, in today's climate, there are challenges with finding employees, whether they're professional staff or support staff, so, you know, we continue to navigate those challenges, but at certain times of year, a little more difficult. The applicant pool is better at certain times of year than others. But it's just, it is something that, you know, we have to navigate.
I have a question. Kind of went off of what he said. Are teachers okay? This is Mr. Kenny, and this is my daughter, she's a teacher, this is her third year. That's when my kids started over with a whole new teacher mid-year, and I just, are the teachers okay right now?
Nope.
I have a question. Kind of went off of what he said. Are teachers okay? This is Mr. Kenny, and this is my daughter, she's a teacher, this is her third year. My kids have started over with a whole new teacher mid-year, and I just, are the teachers okay right now?
Nope.
It's, it's been a challenging year for our professional staff, for our support staff, classroom aides, administrators. I think any employee that's in the school system is experiencing some challenges. So, you know, to, to sit up here and say it's been easy would be disingenuous on my part. So, you know, with, with, with the unattended consequences of those challenges, I think we're, we're seeing some, some things that we're asking the board to approve here that are personnel-related that can't really be specifically commented upon.
Any other questions from the board? Can I get a roll call vote?
Yes. Mrs. Albright?
Yes.
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Godfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Jerick?
Yes.
Mrs. Leoni?
Yes.
Mr. Scott, yes. Mr. Strobel?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Olson?
Yes.
Nine yeses.
Moving on to finance added consent. Do I have a motion for 5A, 1 through 4? Mr. Strobel, do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Albright, second. I will ask if Ms. Haynes can talk to us a little bit about the, the inventory that needs to be done, about like when, when the last one was done?
Yeah.
Last time it was approved for the district, it was probably around 1990s to early 1990s. Right now, we pulled the building. I really, I'm not comfortable on a financial perspective, reporting on a, if you approve the audit. It has a whole section that's reported for the audit of our inventory and what we have in the district, and there's certain regulations, GAD 34, that even from evaluation standpoint and insurance, this really should be done on a more regular basis. Now that we're finally getting a little bit more caught up and things are fixed, like general workers and stuff, this was just the next item on my list to get them. This guy, the company that I'm suggesting, is the company that did it back in the 1990s, so they've been around quite long sometime. There was a lot of record by instructors to make sure it related to the inventory, so unless somebody becomes willing to ask about the recording of the inventory, usually everybody had a pretty good, yeah, very good experience with everybody there. I want to be able to go around and have these people come in when the kids aren't in, which is next summer, sometime in late June, early July, and have it in my budget. I hate to see it changing. I want that to be other company doing the inventory this summer, it doesn't disrupt anybody that is, you know, in the inventory. But in order to do that, I have something approved now, because the schedules are all looking up for you. So I did an RFP just to make sure. I contacted our auditor, I Googled every single thing I could find for inventory companies. We had some astronomical ones that were on the other side, we had a lower one that really, I don't think I've included everything that I wanted, because they were just talking more specifically about 6,000, 3,000 or more. I want kind of everything, so I want everything, because you have to have that valuation and that, got to be very thorough with the inspection, and you have to oversee that. So I picked the guy in the middle. This guy I talked to before I even started the RFP process, just to kind of get an idea of what I was looking for. I'm comfortable with him, so that is probably my recommendation, the I A A. It's a good price, $20,000, I was committing on $20,000, so it seemed good. And that is my recommendation, my suggestion. So, do you have any questions for him?
I have two.
Uh huh.
One, the 17A, is that a one-time thing or is it an annual thing?
There is an annual thing attached to that, but I did not sign up to that. I don't opt in the year, because I think once we have it, and we have the inventory obtained, it's a good starting point, and now it's just matter of day, maintain.
Right.
And with this, you know, we didn't really have a consistent staff for years before. It was kind of like a rotating thing. But we have rolling systems like that now, we have software that's available, and once we live in there, we can maintain it.
That would be my recommendation. We did it, we did it in three years. The scary part's when you find out what's actually missing in three years from now. Where's that go?
Yeah.
Because you have an in and out, so, okay, that makes sense. I know that's going to be every year.
Yeah, it means mainly aware that we are doing this, so there might be, when you're looking at the audit for next year, you'll see that, that adjustment in there, and I'll make that note.
That must be something that's recorded then, like, let's say they do it again a few years from now, here's the stuff that's missing. Because that's the key, you know? There's no point in doing inventory, not kind of look at what's missing, right?
Exactly, and then you'll see that. You'll see, well, the inventory right now, we have the basis. We don't, I don't, I don't think there's even a solid basis.
Right.
Do you understand what I mean?
Absolutely. It's a good starting point, yep.
Did you have any other questions?
No, that was, got both of them down in mind.
So, I guess I'm, I'm not moving enough. Yeah, go ahead.
I have a question about the appraisal. I can't open it. It, it just gives me like when I get downloads.
It's a URL.
And then it just gives me a bunch of stuff that's not, yeah.
Oh, there was an email that was sent to us?
I know, I was, I can't see it on here, that's why.
Yeah.
Which one's that?
Yeah, you see?
It was like Friday or something.
Which one, what's, what's?
I was able to open it when I was home.
Is that the ABCY?
I'm just sorry that the public can't see.
No, no, I understand, I understand.
I think the .url on there should be there, the address of the name. It's a PDF, it's supposed to be PDF, it's got a .url, I have to work this stuff.
Yeah.
I'll throw it off.
Yep, I think you're probably right.
The one at the bottom.
Yep. Yeah, if you look, it says it's got zero, zero, it's an empty file.
Oh, yes, yeah, it is. I'll have to fix that.
Okay. Do we have a paper copy in the back?
I can get one if you bring it out.
Okay. Yeah, if you wouldn't, wouldn't mind putting it out there? Yeah. How, how many pages is it?
It's seven pages.
Okay.
So they print a couple copies?
No.
I read it already.
I did too. Does anybody?
I think she was more concerned that the public could get to it.
Yep, two copies, yeah. I just wanted it in, I just wanted it in the back of the room.
Julia, I think she was more concerned that the public.
Well, I'll, I'll go get it right now, because somebody in the public would love to put it right on that.
Oh, 17 pages.
Thank you.
And we'll make sure that it's, it's fixed tomorrow. I'd like to have it before we vote on it. I did want to just say that when I started coming to the board meetings in 2009, I guess, the, this was a discussion that was had that we needed to have a new inventory completed because they were already at loose ends about what was here and what wasn't here in, at that time period. It was mentioned at the facilities meetings, it was mentioned at the finance meetings, you know, and so I wasn't surprised that, that it was brought up not only by our current auditor, but our previous auditor, and that I, and I'm also, I also have known that Ms. Haynes has had it as a goal to make this happen for several years. You know, we've been visiting a couple of others before now, but, so I wasn't surprised to hear that she, she was hoping to get this done this year, because it had, every, every time we put it off, you know, we are getting closer to the 30-year mark. I've never, I've not had one, so.
Does it include the basements?
Yes. And I mean, that was, I mean, you know, they just went through and did, you know, and, and found.
All kinds of stuff.
All kinds of stuff. Yeah.
Also, then there, we have a bar code, which my RFP included, I wanted a bar code, so we made the bar code thing, and we have extra tax. I want extra tax for the.
Makes it easier to count the second time around.
I'm still, did someone go? Did Angie, Angie want to go get that?
No, Greg did.
Greg? Oh, yeah. I don't see it, it's Christmas time. Sorry, please hold.
Rob, do you have a good joke or anything?
I was going to say something.
Looks like a million bucks.
Here.
Rob didn't listen to you.
So, if we have no other questions, we can have a roll call vote now that it's here.
Okay.
I have, I have it, thank you. She's just keeping us on the straight and narrow. I'm totally fine with that. Thank you.
All right, you got Mrs. Albright?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Godfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Jerick?
Yes.
Mrs. Leoni?
Yes.
Mr. Scott, yes. Mr. Strobel?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Olson?
Yes.
Nine yeses.
Okay, so moving on to personnel added consent, 6A, 1 through 3. Do I have a motion? Have a second? Ms. Bell, do I have a second? Mrs. Godfrey? The only thing I wanted to point out is that we recently, I think in November, had a presentation about mock trial club being added, and that is, that is on here. So I just wanted to, I just wanted to point that out. The, the team with, so far, just as a, not even as an official school club, has done very, very well the last two years, even though we can't, we can't even do the, the competition in person, so. Wish them this year, if we vote yes, I guess I shouldn't step forward, but, do we have any comments, questions from the board about personnel added consent? Can I get a vote?
Sure. Mrs. Albright?
Yes.
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Godfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Jerick?
Yes.
Mrs. Leoni?
Yes.
Mr. Scott, yes. Mr. Strobel?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Olson?
Yes.
Nine yeses.
Okay, now I wish them luck when they, when they compete in this spring. And, okay, moving on to programs added consent, 7A, 1 through 3. Do I have a motion for those?
May I?
Mr. Scott, do I have a second? Ms. Thompson, 10 seconds, all, all club, club and trip related. Any comments, questions, concerns from the board?
I have a question.
Oh, yeah.
What, when did Odyssey the Mind go away?
It's just at the high school, and there haven't been, we haven't had a team at the high school level for several years. Okay. Now, we'd be willing to support it again if, if we have kids that are interested again.
Because it's still, it's still at the middle school, correct?
Absolutely, it's still functioning there.
I'm just concerned if we replace it, and then there's not an opportunity for them to, I'm just, but if there's no interest.
And if there is, if there is, I would assume either they would be making that known at the, to, to the high school staff or to the advisor at the middle school.
Right, because they seem like two different things.
Right, but, you know, we did, you know, we, and even before, even before we, we had COVID, like, limited, you know, because Odyssey the Mind is very, is, is like a thing where, so Odyssey the Mind, for the people that are here, is a thing where the kids get a problem to solve, but you, when you, when you solve that problem, you get, I think, eight minutes to perform a play for, for people who are assembled, and then you also get to compete in what's called the spontaneous, where you, where you solve a problem, it's very close contact with your, with your fellow students, and so I don't know, I know that they, people participated online, but I don't know if they've met for several years.
Okay.
But, but even before COVID, we had had not a team at the high school level.
Okay.
And so we got to make, make the room for a group that wants to come in, and, yeah, but if there is.
No, I didn't have an issue with mock trials.
Absolutely.
They were not, it's like they were replacing it, and I don't consider them the same thing.
Right, and that's what category three is, the high school, and, yeah, and, but we still have kids at the intermediate center. I think that there's still even an opportunity, because they, that doesn't start until third grade, but there is like a smaller, less complicated problem that you can compete in at second grade, and so there are, there is the opportunity to do that as well. But the big groups that we have always sent, was middle school and high, middle school and intermediate.
Wasn't available next, last year? Maybe, wasn't available?
It was.
Okay, so the kids that are doing it in middle school today, they wouldn't maybe want to carry that on through?
And if they do, we'll find out about it, we'll figure out what to do next. Yeah, so, yeah, so, okay, any other questions about the, the clubs and, and the trips? Mr. Scott?
Mrs. Albright?
Yes.
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Godfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Jerick?
Yes.
Mrs. Leoni?
Yes.
Mr. Scott, yes. Mr. Strobel?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Olson?
Yes.
Nine yeses.
Okay, moving on to old business, A, 8A, 1 to 3. I have a motion for those. Ms. Godfrey, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Jerick? Comments, questions, concerns from the board about the minutes? Can I get a vote?
A vote?
Yeah. Mr. Scott?
All right, Mrs. Albright?
Yes.
Mrs. that?
Yes.
Mrs. Godfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Jerick?
Yes.
Mrs. Leoni?
Yes.
Mr. Scott, yes. Mr. Strobel?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson? And Mrs. Olson?
Yes.
Nine yeses.
Okay, we have nothing on the new business, so time for presentations by the public on any issue. Do I have anyone? Okay, before we adjourn, oh, I'm sorry. No, no, it's fine.
Get back the things we talked about a little bit earlier.
Oh, if I could just get your name?
Rick Knowles.
Okay.
So I don't know if you all know it. I think a lot of you did. There's evil in her face today. It's very prevalent, it's all of her wife's crap. And one way to get through this is to read God's word, that His Holy Spirit will speak to our hearts and help us to handle things, let us know where we're at, what we should do. And I want to know that the kids are going to be treated properly. Very important, great kids, great family kids, so. That's where I'll leave you all after this holiday season, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay, before we have motions to adjourn, I just wanted to say it's been a rocky but interesting first half of the year. I know for the kids, it's not the half, it's more like the third mark, but I'm hoping that 2022 is, has slightly easier, easier decisions to be made than 2021 for everyone who's here. I hope you have a good holiday, and if, if the holidays are a difficult time for you, I hope they land gently. So, can I get a motion to adjourn? Okay, before we have motions to adjourn, I just wanted to say it's been a rocky but interesting first half of the year. I know for the kids, it's not the half, it's more like the third mark, but I'm hoping that 2022 has slightly easier, easier decisions to be made than 2021 for everyone who's here. I hope you have a good holiday, and if, if the holidays are a difficult time for you, I hope they land gently. So, can I get a motion to adjourn? I get a second. Bye, everybody. Have a good week off.